Would like to begin the meeting, the regular meeting of the Dutchess County IDA. Jasmine, if you could take the roll call for the regular meeting.
Jim Dean.
Here.
Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Kathy Bauer.
Here.
Amy Bundadiri.
Here.
Jamie Ficcone.
Here.
Don Sagliano.
Here.
Al Tua Johnny.
Okay. Bear with me while I just call up the agenda. Okay, so the first thing that I would like to do is to remind everybody about the conflict of interest policy that we have. If there's anything on the agenda for this meeting that would create a conflict for you, please let us know now. And if at any time during the meeting you become aware of something, I would ask that you let us know so that we can recuse you from the discussion. So.
This is Mark Doyle. I'd like to declare my conflict of interest with HVADC. I am the chairman of the board of HVADC. I further understand that Todd Erling is giving a report this morning and I don't believe there's any discussion. So if it's okay, board and lawyer, Don Capellino deems it's okay, I'll listen in, but not comment.
Yeah, there's no problem with.
Okay, so we do not need to recuse Mark from any part since it's only a discussion.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Is there anybody else that would like to mention anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Could you just, you used the term HBADC. I just want to clarify that that's the Hudson Valley Agribusiness Development Corporation.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, proof of meeting notice was posted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have in here approval of minutes for the December 16th and December 23rd meetings. Does anybody have any corrections or comments about those prior meeting minutes? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 16th and December 23rd?
Mark Doyle, so moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jamie and Mark. Okay, Jasmine, could you take a vote, please?
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Amy Bundadiri.
Approve.
James Ficcone.
Approve.
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Jim Dean.
Approved. And I do want to apologize to everybody. I know at times it may seem a little bit too strict of rules to take roll call votes and all of our motions. But I feel that our business is very important and that each member's vote be accurately recorded. And I even feel more so about that since we are, you know, dealing in Zoom and it's hard to tell when people are approving or disproving of things if we do it as a group. So I think it's just good business practice. Sarah, are there any? I didn't ask about bills and communications. Were there any?
No.
Okay, report of the treasurer. Sarah.
There's no report.
Okay.
Due to the, we're going through audit for the year end.
Okay, Sarah, report of committees.
No report of committees.
Any unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
Okay, so I think that leads us to our presentation by Todd Erling. Todd, welcome. Sarah, did you want to introduce Todd?
So yes, so Todd is the CEO and president of the Hudson Valley Agribusiness Development Corporation. The IDA has a three-year contract with the organization and as part of the contract, Todd is to give a year-end presentation. So that is why he is here this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Sarah, staff and members and general public that are tuning in for this. Appreciate the opportunity to update and look forward to a time where we're all sitting back in a room together. But, you know, pivoting to the opportunity to have a screen and I applaud you all on going through the regular business. I was a executive director of an IDA in a past life myself and recognize the challenges sometimes of just the course of ABO and all the other regulations and alphabet soups we work with. So good job this morning.
Thank you.
So with that, just following up, you know, we've been working with the Dutchess County IDA. We also have relationships in the valley with Orange County, Ulster County, Sullivan County, just the Northeast, Columbia County. And, you know, that's really our core area that we had developed HVADC with. But we've also extended now to Rensselaer, Albany and Washington counties for contracts with both their IDAs and planning departments. And that's really created a corridor of consistency. And just to give everyone a quick reminder, you know, what HVADC primarily does is provide technical assistance, one-on-one business expertise to farms, farm-dependent, farm-related businesses within the food, local food ecosystem and local food entrepreneurship. We work very closely with the Dutchess County Ag Navigator. We work very closely with Sarah. Think Duchess and the traditional SBA, SBDC, Small Business Development Services. But we try to liaison between those different worlds, the production side and, you know, farms are lucky to have an alphabet soup of NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Services, Soil and Water, Cooperative Extension. And often we serve as a bridge between many of those individual liaisons. And that was really illustrated well throughout some of the pivoting with the pandemic where not only did we help farms understand challenges for labor and very traditional things that overlap, but then also moving into PPP, Payroll Protection Program, IDOL, the Emergency Disaster Loan Program, and some of the other things that started to come out that were directly related to federal and state incentives related to the pandemic and responses such as the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, et cetera. So this morning I just wanted to highlight some of the individual businesses that we worked with and the roles that we played. But then also some of the umbrella conceptual programs that we offer for Dutchess County and the critical mass that we bring working with eight regional counties and two REDCs, the Regional Economic Development Councils in the state program, as well as the federal opportunities that we start to liaison with, not only through USDA and SBA and Department of Treasury and Department of Commerce, but also some of the peer groups that we work with. HVADC has brother and sister organizations throughout the Northeast and the nation that we've helped to mobilize and bring voice to and bring results that trickle right down into Dutchess County on a federal level and on a national level. So moving into that, I did provide an annual update as we typically do in a PDF format. If everyone is able to look at that or look at it throughout any time in the future, I know it's nine pages right now. It's a bit to do live. But I wanted to focus on a few things throughout that update. And that's starting with our incubator without walls and our Farm and Food Business Accelerator programs. So IWW, FFBA, those are our alphabet soups forum. But the bottom line is they are bringing marketing experts, financial experts, often attorneys, food safety specialists into the opportunities and challenges that individual entrepreneurs come to us with throughout the year. And some examples of that in the incubator without walls updates were branch water farms. And often we have relationships year over year. We've done that with Fishkill, as Mark can attest, as challenges and funding opportunities come up for these businesses. So Branch Water, we started out working with them, launching a distillery, really solidifying the opportunity to be a farm distillery. And then through 2021, we've actually helped them diversify with some livestock, which is a great opportunity and a value add because distillers create spent grains and byproduct that actually becomes livestock feed. And so it becomes a full cycle opportunity right on the farm for them. And also some additional income and markets with the livestock and the products that come, as well as the visitor experience that happens when you have a distillery and tastings room. We also worked with a startup team looking to challenge, identify some of the challenges and overcome some of the real sticking points and meat processing. We've all heard a lot of discussion on that throughout the pandemic. And so we've actually worked with a group in Dutchess County that are looking to launch a new facility. They're existing farmers that have the need. And it's a great diverse opportunity. They're calling themselves Dream Team Butchers. Wanted to focus a little bit on Sam Rose, Four Corner Community Farm and Sunrunner Farm. What's really important there is we actually brought in some expertise on organic small grain production. Some of you in the region and in the county know, you know, Kenny Miglarelli has looked at this. And what's so important about small grains and introducing some of the diversity that they can provide for farmers is it helps with nutrient management, it helps with rotation of property, but it also brings in a real value add because some of the grains can be used for livestock feed. Some of the grains can be used for human consumption directly, as we can imagine with ground grains and flour and buckwheat oats. But then also it can move into some of the brewing and distilling challenges that we have for sourcing for some of our local brewers and distillers. So we worked really closely with Sam Rose and diversifying and creating a plan on that. And I also just wanted to focus on two more. Great Song Farm, which is a woman-owned partnership that was part of our accelerator program. We helped them not only diversify, but also increase their customer base by almost fifty percent, over fifty percent with their CSAs, which was a great pivot during the pandemic where they were able to get right into the community and have customers on the ground. That helped and community support agriculture. What's interesting about that is, you know, you actually pay for a subscription, helps offset some of the operating costs at times where there are real challenges, but then provides typically a weekly pickup for customers throughout the growing season that they share in the bounty or the risk that happens depending on crop and weather and labor and other variables. And then last thing was Over Creek Brewing, a longtime, you know, farm brewery, a leader within the movement in the Hudson Valley and the fact that they're ready to start expanding. And so, you know, I just wanted to illustrate our services are not just for startup or not just for beginning, but are also for maturing and helping businesses not only survive, but thrive and diversify and develop within the footprint. So those are just some examples of individual farm and food businesses. There are several others, obviously, in the packet. I then just wanted to highlight the fact that HVADC, you know, in working with the IDA and the Dutchess community actually was a successful applicant to some additional CARES Act provided funding. And we will be starting a new loan program within the mid-Hudson region that was made available through US Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration Funds, EDA, and part of their RLF, the revolving loan fund program. There was not an existing EDA RLF program within the mid-Hudson region. We worked not only with Dutchess County, but Orange and Ulster and Sullivan to pull together a competitive application and create the first EDA RLF program within the mid-Hudson region. And that was funded through some CARES Act funding. Over $2 million will be made available to a new portfolio launching in 2022 for farm and food businesses specifically. And we will continue to make the Empire State Development, JDA, Job Development Authority loan funds available throughout the region as well. We closed on four of those loans in the region last year. I wanted to also focus on Feed HV, Feed the Hudson Valley. That's an initiative that was launched originally by the community foundations of the Hudson Valley, based out of Dutchess County. The idea originally was to have a twofold mission. Help the environment by reducing food waste and food going into landfills and potentially contributing to greenhouse gases and carbon production. But at the same time, taking that food and returning it into food insecure or pantry programs right on the ground in the community. So Feed HV over the years, being launched out of the mid-Hudson region, we've actually helped save almost 400,000 pounds of food, which results in over 330,000 meals going into the community. And not only is that coming directly from food businesses, chefs, restaurants, some retail operations, but from farmers donating directly if they have product left after a farmer's market, if they have product left after a distribution for their customers, they can then actually make connections directly with volunteers that will bring the consumable product grown in the community to a food pantry right in the community. And what's amazing about that beyond the poundage and beyond the meals on people's tables that are challenged to have fresh, healthy food is also the fact that it actually offset over a million miles in driving the equivalent of basically a million miles of car miles driven in carbon offsets. So it's a, you know, win-win-win, helping our farmers and our food businesses move waste back into pantries, helping the food insecure and helping the environment. I also wanted to highlight in that program that Sina Hudson and HVADC formed a unique relationship starting in the beginning of the pandemic that continued through 2021. And Sina Hudson actually did cash donations to HVADC in the program. We actually took that cash and then purchased at cost farm product, local farm product. And we did that with two different products over 2021. We did it with a locally produced steelhead and got some amazing, fresh, healthy fish into the pantry system. But then we also did this with frozen product that freed up pallet positions for local farms. Local farms recently had a challenge where their cold storage facility actually closed. We worked with another local food business to free up some frozen food pallets that we were able to purchase at cost and had delivered locally-produced turkey, beef, pork, duck, goose, all during the holiday season. And what was great about that was over 4,500 pounds of locally-produced frozen food went into the pantry system during the holiday period. Over 1,700 pounds of that found its way down into Dutchess County pantries. And that was all made possible by the cash donation of Sina Hudson and working with the local food program, a local food company called Hudson Harvest. And then last few things, you know, along those lines, we continue to serve on the Dutchess County Agricultural Advisory Committee. The end of 2021, we helped organize one of their focus panels on local food challenges and local food productions. It was actually the best attended of all the panels that were done virtually by the Ag Advisory Council last year. Happy to give you guys some updates on that. And then last thing is talking about the regional opportunities that we bring for Dutchess County and the community. We were again on the panel of the National Farm Viability Conference. We had hosted that in Albany four years ago, two years ago. We helped serve on the committee that brought it to Red Wing, Minnesota. And this year, just reflecting the national component of that, it was hosted in Oregon and HVADC was not only a sponsor and organizer of it, but also we helped with some of the keynote presentations, including Congressman Delgado and Senator Leahy, both leaders in the House and Senate ag committees, making some presentations on not only Corona response, but opportunities coming up in the farm bill. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what we were able to pull together with the network that we call the Agricultural Viability Alliance. Hudson Valley and New England service providers have come together. We've been working with American Farmland Trust to have a voice with rural communities for one-on-one business technical assistance to be funded, not only on a federal budget, but farm bill and CARES Act relief. We've met with Domestic Policy Council in the White House. We've met with leadership on both sides of the aisle and in both the House and the Senate. And that actually has resulted in several communications with over 100 cosigners from Hawaii to Maine, Alaska to Texas, at really pushing for business technical assistance to be a priority, not only of the Department of Commerce, Department of Treasury, but also USDA and the Rural Development. And I'll pause there.
Wow, lots going on. I have a question for you, or maybe you could, maybe you're anywhere. So we've had a couple of projects come before us that are commercial combination of commercial and residential apartments, houses, townhouse developments. For example, the former Hudson Valley Psychiatric Center site, as well as the project in Hyde Park crossing the culinary. And both of them have, as part of their plans, open space. And my question to you, is there any possibility of some type of a partnership, whether it be a working farm or a demonstration farm, accommodation farmer's market, to include some more direct agricultural work within those open spaces?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to have that conversation through the American Farmland Trust and New York State budgeted funds that are distributed through the Department of Agriculture. Hudson Valley Agribusiness, along with several other regional partners, are part of the Farm Link Program. And that actually is an ability, gives us the ability to identify the acreage or identify the production opportunity at the development site. And then inventory that and make it known and available on a virtual platform for farmers that are looking for additional acreage in specific areas or with specific attributes. So that would be one way we could link that available acreage to farmers that are seeking additional lands or new farmers that are looking to be planted in the valley, all pun intended.
Yes, and then as I mentioned, the, there will be residents in those developments. So the opportunity potentially to combine that with some type of a farm market or CSEA or something, you know, could be a critical mass that of enough people either living there or coming there as tourists to make it viable, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's very much worth exploring. And as you mentioned, you know, part of the critical success for this is also the market opportunity. And I think that's unique with some of the developments you just presented.
Does anybody else in the board have any questions for Todd? Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation, Sarah. Is there any action that we need to take on Todd's presentation? Or was it just for information purposes?
It's for information purposes.
Okay, all right. Bear with me while I get back to the agenda. Okay. So, all right, so next thing on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the executive director of the IDA to enter into an agreement with Duchess Tourism for professional services. Sarah, would you like to talk about that?
Yes, so first of all, Melane Rockcamp, who is the CEO and president of Tourism apologizes for not being able to attend this morning's meeting. She is on a flight, early morning flight, returning from the American Bus Association Marketplace show in Texas. So she apologizes for not being able to be here. This is just a, you know, as the IDA has a professional service contract with Tourism on an annual basis. It has been the practice of the IDA on the request of Duchess Tourism to approve the annual contract prior to the presentation of the prior year's outcomes. The reason for this is that Duchess Tourism receives public funds and those public funds are required to be spent in the prior year. So 2021 funds need to be all spent in 2021. And Tourism currently does not have a fund balance to carry them to the, you know, to a future meeting where they can make the presentation to the IDA board. So Tourism is requesting if the board would consider approval of the 2022 contract in advance of the presentation of the 2021 outcomes.
So just to be clear, we have had presentations from Melanie on occasion in the past. And we do have a copy of the agreement in our packets here. And Sarah, perhaps you would just really briefly go over the fund, the sum of money that's involved with the contract. I'm looking at page one of the contract. Just whilst Sarah's finding that, it says the Dutchess County IDA hereby agrees to reimburse Duchess, our DTI for services to provide it as more fully set forth in Schedule A. Sum of $425,000 for the year 2022 as follows, and it breaks out what it's about. So if any board member has any questions of the exact amounts that are in the contract.
Yeah, so it is for, you're correct, 425,000. Don Sagliano.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Don.
Jim Dean, can we just ensure that the $425,000 has been appropriately referenced in our adopted budget for 2022 as an expenditure?
Sarah?
Yes, we have, we have accounted for that in our 22 budget.
Okay, I just, I was 99% sure, just wanted to make a statement.
Fair question. Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, so it is 425 for the year, of which a $100,000 of that goes to the mid-Hudson, mid-Hudson Arts, Arts Mid-Hudson. And then 25,000, oh, I think there's an echo, I'm sorry. 25,000 goes to the Hudson Valley Film Commission. And then the remaining goes to Duchess Tourism.
And also just to point out that only 212,000 of it is paid at the early part of the contract. The balance is paid on June 15th as we move through the year and as things are presented to us. So, does anybody else in the board have any questions or concerns about authorizing Sarah to approve this contract?
Okay. Mark Doyle, sorry.
Yes, Mark.
I have a question, because unless I'm mistaken, the contract includes the scope of services as well, right?
Yes.
Correct. So at the end of the contract, you will see the scope of services as well as the proposed outcomes.
Right. And so that's where I was going is relative to the proposed outcomes, looking at, you know, some of the numbers and just wondering what discussion led up to those numbers. It does seem like they're using last year's achievements as the goals for 2022. And if so, what type of discussion is being had or we might have regarding those outcomes? Or the goals, I should say.
Sarah?
Yeah, so I, if we want to change their goals or?
Well, so, you know, obviously, last year was a different kind of year because of COVID. And we would hope that 2022 is a lot better. So, you know, is it appropriate to keep those goals at the same level as 2021? Number one, and yeah, that's the key part of my argument.
So I guess Sarah, Sarah, my question, or maybe I'll add to Mark's is, what, you know, to the best of your recollection, what were your goals prior to the pandemic? Did they change during the pandemic? And are they going to change as we move out of the pandemic? Or are the type of goals they have tend to be repetitive based on some fact?
So their, their goals as far as the, the funds that they use, the IDA, or the programs they use the IDA funds for remain the same. So they're not changing any of the programming that they have done in the past for the IDA. So that remains the same. There are, there is some increase in their, in their goals, such as they are hoping to increase the bed tax collection. They're hoping to increase their digital presence from, you know, last year. So there is some change in that. So there is some change in that. But in terms of the scope of the work and what programs that they will do are will remain the same.
So Sarah, this is a follow up to Mark's question is, I think what he's asking is, should we be revising our expectations of the organization in exchange for the funds that they get? Or is it a reasonable thing to expect them to just achieve the same goal each year?
I think it's reasonable to expect them to achieve the, and I'm sorry if I'm not understanding it correctly, the same goals and use the same metrics. They just have a maybe a slight increase in some of the numbers that they would achieve within that same goal.
So what your, Mark, do you have any other follow up questions for Sarah on that?
Well, okay, so do you mind if we just keep digging a little bit deeper? So let's take the, the generating an increase in the bed tax. So I understand that the 3.125 million target is in fact what was accomplished last year and that what they're looking, you know, according to the text here, they're looking to increase the bed tax collection over that target. But, you know, is it any increase or is there a percentage increase? And the same applies for the others as well. I'm, I'm, maybe I'm nitpicking, but you know, I know, I know how these outcome goals are set and it just seems like there's a little piece that's not quite clear yet.
So, so Sarah, and again, Mark, I'm trying to help, help also. I think there's a, you know, there's an expression, what's get measured gets done. And so if if we do not ask them, you know, are some of these things that they have in here, should the goal be to increase the numbers somehow by efficiency or working harder to, you know, get a better result than the year before? And so if they have just repeated, for example, attending international trade shows, sales, they have 530 people or 530, you know, would it be better for everybody if they were to go through a few more and have a goal of maybe getting a little bit higher number? You know? And if so, what are they going to do to change that outcome? You know, are, should we be, as Mark, you know, called it, are we being nitpicky? Or, you know, should we just ask them to consider having some, you know, improving their metrics?
So I, that I think is the board to decide. But I do think, I do think that they do show that they are in in some, you know, instances such as the bed tax is they do. Well, the bed tax is a, is a hard, but for like the sale earned sales tax revenue, it was 440 million in 2020. They are, and then they say their target is 42210. I guess where it's not clear is if that's their target for 2022 or if that's what they achieved in 2021, is that?
Yeah, you know, is there a difference in what they achieved and what they hope to achieve in the new year? Are they just taking what they did in 21 and saying, we want to match that in 22?
So you know, what I can do, I, what I can do is I can have Melane provide a clarification of that that is their 2022 goal or if that is what they achieved in 2021. And and if so, why are they keeping it this level the same?
I mean, just to be clear, I mean, we have a history for Melane as well of this organization doing a great job. I think we just want to, I mean, this probably would have had been answered if she was with me, which is unfortunate. So I think what we probably are looking for is, you know, when she comes to present, to have some, some more detailed information about, take their prior year achievements and use it as goal for the new year? Or do they look at the prior years and make new goals based on some proposed actions or specific things that they're going to do in 2022 to make them different?
Yeah, and the, and to, because this is a cash flow issue for the organization, if doesn't pass, is that this is only half their payment that we are authorizing now. So at the next meeting where she makes her presentation, if there's any changes to be made, we can make that before the second payment in June is authorized.
Okay. Mark, was that an adequate answer for you right now to make you comfortable?
Yeah, no, I'm entirely comfortable. Not just that we're going to, you know, have a second part of the payment, but that, you know, this is a longstanding agreement with them and a relationship with them. And, you know, I'm really just bringing out a point where I think that we could work together to 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 aim a little bit higher or clarify the goals at least. And I don't think it's material to actually coming to an agreement for a contract.
Got it, I think that's well said and I, and I agree with you. And, you know, we, we should not just, as an organization, we shouldn't always just be comfortable with repeating the same as prior years. We always want to, you know, see that people are taking a hard look at at their activities and their goals and objectives and and shooting for, you know, something new in the new year based on, you know, differences in their activities. So, okay, does anybody else in the board have any questions about this with Duchess County Tourism? All right, so what I would look to have is a motion from somebody to, I keep getting mixed up between the prior meetings minutes and the new agenda. Consideration and approval of resolution authorizing the executive director of the I D A enter into an agreement with Duchess Tourism for professional services. Would somebody be willing to make that motion?
Mark Doyle, having asked the questions, I'd be very glad to make the motion.
Thank you, Mark, could I get a second? Don Sagliano, I heard a second, thank you. Jasmine, could you take a vote, please?
Mark Doyle?
Approved.
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Amy Bondediri?
Approved.
David Focone?
Approved.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Tim Dean?
Approved. Okay, the final item on the agenda here is the authorization for approval for check signing as of January 12th, 2022. And the authorized, potentially the possible authorized individuals are myself as chair, Mark Doyle as vice chair, Kathleen Bowers, Secretary and Treasurer, Sarah Lee, CEO, and Jane Denbaum, CFO. Sarah, very quickly, could you just, or or Jane, could you outline the dual signature requirements that we have?
Yeah, if there's any check over $10,000, it must have a two signatures. Otherwise, under 10,000 is one signature.
Thank you. And just again, for the board's edification, I do get copies of all check, you know, requests that are being made for various vendors. And I sign off on those, Jane sends those to me. And I do sign off on on the ledgers themselves. So there is that also that oversight as well. Any questions from board members? Okay, hearing done, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Jamie, could I get a second?
I'll second, Don Sagliano.
Thank you. Jasmine, could you please take a vote?
Mark Doyle?
Approved.
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Amy Bondediri?
Approved.
David Focone?
Approved.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Tim Dean?
Approved. All right, Sarah or anybody, is there any other matters that we can discuss?
No.
Okay, with that, I will adjourn the regular meeting of the Duchess County I D A. And I'm going to take a brief pause for the, in the recording, and then we'll start the L D C.